I think Tammy wants the mic on. Yeah, she's waiting for you guys.
Test? Good evening and welcome. We're so thrilled that you have come to our evening. I'm Tammy McDonald, I'm the President of SCAPUSS Education Association. This is Archie Lortos, the President of SCAPUSS Federation of Classified Employees. And we're thrilled with the turnout. We hope you enjoy and learn about our candidates and become an informed voter and vote perfectly well. Thanks. I'm going to turn your work to Elise from Oregon Education Association, who has graced us and we love that he was willing to come to SCAPUSS and help us host this event. So, thank you very much.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I was asked to be here, you're like, get your spickiest things, so what do you think? Yeah, yeah. The only thing I had was for funeral. Uh, I'm sorry. So, on behalf of the SCAPUSS Education Association and the SCAPUSS Federation of Classified Employees, welcome to tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Andy Saqueta. I'm here to be your M C and to be the moderator for this evening. I am the statewide political organizer from the Oregon Education Association. Tonight, we are here to meet and hear from our 2023 SCAPUSS School Board Candidates. I hope that by the end of this evening, you will all, you will know all the candidates and their goals, their visions for the SCAPUSS School District. If you live in the SCAPUSS School District and are registered to vote, you should have received your ballot last week. And the election date is when?
Tuesday, May 16th.
Tuesday, May 16th. That's right. You didn't know you were coming for a test. So make sure you fill out your ballot and submit it by May 16th. If you'd rather drop off your ballot, instead of handing it, there is ballot drop offs at SCAPUSS City Hall. Now, I'd like to introduce our candidates. All the candidates were invited, just so that you know. And so, this year, we have four zones on the ballot. For Zone 1, our candidates are Zachary Miller, Christine Springer. Running for Zone 2, we have Branda Jurassic. For Zone 6, we have Lauren Fielding and Patrick Kessin. Is that right? Did I say that? Uh, oh, thank you. Our last one is Zone 7. Our candidates are Stephanie Segman and Alex Tardif. Candidates, thank you so much for being here tonight. We are looking forward to hearing from you and getting to know you. Before we begin, I want to go over some ground rules to make sure that everything is fair and equitable to our candidates and to help the event run smoothly. Audience, I know you want to show appreciation to these candidates, but I ask that you please hold your applause until the very, very what?
End.
Of this event. That's right. So, although I hope it goes without saying, there will be no shouting or cheering or booing or heckling. You will be asked to leave if this happens. Everyone, please make sure you silence your cell phones and other trans. So we can have a distraction-free event. Candidates, we have arranged first, we have you arranged by first, by zone, and then alphabetically by last name. For our first question, we will start at this end and then move along the line. So Zachary will answer first and then pass along the mic to the next candidate. With me? Cool. Once everybody has answered, we'll move to the next question and we'll take who answers first. This means Christine will go then. And we'll start us off with the second question. We will continue rotating the answers first for each question they're asked. Woo, okay. When I read each, when I read each question for the first time, I will say how long each candidate has to answer that question. Candidates, if you look down, right there, at the center, you will see a timer. You will start the timer when you begin your answer and then we'll count down the remaining time. When there are 15 seconds left for the question, you will hear a chime. So you should start wrapping up your response at that point. When your time is up, you will hear the chime again and then we'll pass the mic to the next candidate. Okay. With that, it's time for us to get started. Audience, please remember to hold your applause until the very, very...
End.
Yeah, thank you. This evening. Candidates, you will have two minutes for each, for this first question. The first question is, starting with Zachary, and you have the microphone there. Why are you running for school board? And what do you see as your qualifications? Please describe your relevant personal experience and involvement in public schools from the past five years.
My name is Zachary Miller. I'm running for school board to be the voice of the parents. I want to listen and I want always to be heard and the parents to be heard as well. My background is 16 years in management systems. I'm currently a finishing manager for a worldwide corporation in Portland by the airport. I sit on a board of lead team members, similar to a school board, where we make decisions for all the fundamentals for the operations. At one time, I've had 80 employees. I have a leadership team under me who helps manage that situation, making hard decisions, happy decisions. It's just a lot to it. I've been currently at this place at Hidrow for seven years, in management the entire time. We meet every morning focusing on safety, people, budgeting, production and decisions that need to be made for the plan. In my facility, I manage not just the people, but also other surrounding departments. So my family and I volunteer for the school, in school and field trips and fundraising. Every time we fundraise, we usually have the number one in the classroom. I think the fundraiser, we raised a thousand dollars for my daughter. Fundraising is huge, you know, get back to the schools. And that's what I have for question one.
Thank you very much, Zachary. If you could just pass along the mic. Christine?
I have three kids that are from the school district. We started out at Orange Elementary and I have a fifth grader at Otto Peterson, an eighth grader at SCAPUSS Middle School, and then an 11th grader at the high school. I feel like the reason I'm running for school board is I, kids are getting older and the need to be in the classroom is getting a little bit smaller. And so this gives me the next opportunity to be able to help our children. For my background, I went and walked through Warren Elementary. I decided to be on the parent board for that. I started as a secretary and worked my way to all the roles. But I did that for eight years. I'm currently going on eight years of being on the SCAPUSS Youth Football Board, again in various roles. Anybody who knows if you're on board, you kind of do all of the roles. So, um, I'm also for SCAPUSS Little League. I've done many volunteer projects for that. I'm coordinating doing the snack shop this year with a fellow mom. I'm currently on the SCAPUSS Bond Advisory Committee, as well as the SCAPUSS School District Budget Committee. I'm the current coordinator for the middle school at Otto Peterson, volunteer for Gabe for that, and I've been an O B A coach for three years. Along with my involvement and my experience in collaborating with the school admin, teachers, staff, parents and community, I feel like this is a great opportunity for me to be able to expand and help our community. I'm ready to use my experience to be your next school board member.
Very much. Brian?
Hi, my name is Branda Jurassic. Thanks for coming. I also have kids in the district. I have a freshman at the high school, a sixth grader at Salvey Island School. I was born and raised in Montana, went down to Arizona, got my finance degree from Arizona State, moved to Portland and got my master's degree at Portland State. My husband Matt and I have been living in the district for over 20 years. This is our community, it's where we're raising our kids. And during this time, I've had a lot of opportunities to volunteer in the district. I've done coaching, basketball, soccer. I was relegated to equipment manager for the flight football team. I was on the Salvey Island Budget Committee and also still work with them on the auction committee. And, oh yeah, I've been working for four years. And during this time, I've really seen some great things. We appointed a student, a director of student achievement and through her team, she is leading the path to create a successful learning environment for all of our kids. We've also hired a communications director, who is coming battling between the parents and the district and community as a whole. I've also been on various committees throughout my board experience and these committees are made up of parents, teachers, community members, students. So I really want to say that the chance is there for everybody to get involved and participate with our schools. I really think that strong communities create strong schools, strong schools create strong communities. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you very much. And I know I'm very cathartic, but for those who just joined us, I'm going to repeat the question one more time. Why are you running for school board? And what do you see as your qualifications? Please describe your involvement, personal experience and involvement in public schools from the past five years.
Well, my name's Lauren Fielding. I've lived in SCAPUSS for 29 years. I have eight children, all who have gone through the SCAPUSS School District. I have two of my daughters who are teachers. And I run a local tree company for the last 19 years and have done a lot of different businesses. I guess you could say I'm an entrepreneur. I love business and I love working with people. I was also, did volunteer as a head of our congregation for over six years and which required a lot of listening, a lot of, you know, confidential information and trying to help solve different problems and situations. And so I think that that's, some of that experience having eight kids with all different personalities and dealing with employees and that volunteer service. We also have properties that we've remodeled and we actually work with a lot of low-income and people near poverty who are just trying to get that second chance. Sometimes they didn't always have the best parents or they had a life situation that really hindered them. So that's been fulfilling, helping people succeed and get back on their feet. So, I'm excited to work with the teachers, the parents and, I mean, we love SCAPUSS School District. All my kids went through, we've been to lots of plays, lots of choirs and sports events and so, you know.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Patrick?
I'm going to stand up because I'm getting a little stiff there. But yes, growing up here, SCAPUSS has given me a lot of opportunities and taught me skills to help me get to where I am today. So the main reason I'm running for school board is to grant those same opportunities and more to this next generation of kids. I want to build a future here for the next generation. And in the last five years, my qualifications and experience, first of all, I have five kids and four of the SCAPUSS schools here. So I have a daily hands-on perspective and I'm present here in the community. The other, another qualification is I have a construction business in Portland where I manage large construction projects. We hire top talent and we also serve in building relationships for this community. I also am on the University of Portland Board of Regents and have been on there since 2005. At the University of Portland, we hired two university presidents. So I have experience in hiring a superintendent and being a manager. And then here locally, I was on city government here. I was the past city council president for 2019, 2020. I'm currently the chair of the 50-year planning committee. So I've experienced senior policy and I really have experience knowing that strong education is great for the community. And then for the school district, I was part of a turf fundraising committee in where we raised 1.1 million dollars in four weeks to put a new turf athletic field here. And so I know in this community how to raise money and we may have a bond and we'll need to, we'll need to raise money to support our infrastructure here. And then I'm currently on the school budget committee, which we just had earlier today. And I was the chair of that 2016. So I understand the current budget here and I know that resources are scarce and we need to be able to stretch those as far as we can. And then lastly, I'm a youth coach. So I'm an advocate for youth and I think a school board member definitely has to be an advocate for youth. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Hi, my name is Stephanie. I moved here when I was in third grade. So I've gone through all the schools in SCAPUSS and, you know, I have, I'm married, I have four children. One is in high school, he's 11th grade, he's a football player. And then we have three children that I currently homeschool since the pandemic. As far as qualifications, I mean, I'm educated. I have a bachelor's degree in English. I'm a business owner. I'm a mom, so I run a household. I mean, I think everyone knows what that entails. But I also teach children at my church every week. And as far as the public schools, I have been the chaperone for field trips. I grade meals to the football players, attend concerts and plays, support fundraisers. I'm part of a local community group and mom group that discusses issues that are going on in the schools. We review curriculum planning ongoing this week to review upcoming curriculum. I regularly meet with teachers to find out what is important to them. Oops, sorry. And then, you know, to find out what is important and what they're going through. And then as far as homeschooling, I know that there is this gap between homeschoolers and public school. I think public school is equally important and that's why I want to be a representative of our schools. I think that our schools are very important for our community. I mean, obviously, they, they represent who we are and I want to represent those values, so.
Thank you very much. Alex, please.
Hi, my name is Alex Tardif and I'm running for school board. Why? As a former county commissioner, I had the opportunity to serve our community. And one of the things that I've come to realize is that I'm very passionate about our community and our children and their well-being. As a foster parent and graduate of SCAPUSS High School, I understand our system and I understand what a lot of our kids coming into our system need. I am the chair for Columbia Community Mental Health and in that capacity, I help bridge the gap between mental health with SCAPUSS School District and Columbia Community Mental Health. I am currently the chair for the SCAPUSS School District Budget Committee, which gives me a really good insight to our resources, where we're headed and what our strategic plan is. It also allows me to ask questions about the future and the path that we're on to look at different ways to meet our needs without drastic reduction in workforce. At the end of the day, my biggest commitment is to our community and to our children. And I feel that my financial background, my commitment to this community and my proven track record, our financial stability and the well-being of our children makes me one of the best candidates for this position. So that's what I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just, I do have social norms and social skills. I just want to make sure that I'm letting everybody know that I want to be fair with everybody. So if you hear me interrupt, try and keep the time. So, thanks, candidates, for that. We should start with Christine. So, for this question, each of you will have 90 seconds to answer. 90 seconds. Y'all prepare for this, okay? 90? Okay, cool. So, ready? You ready for the question? Okay. 90 questions, everybody, but 90 seconds? Good, now 90 questions. Woo, we're here, we're here. All right. Ready, here we go. What are your top three priorities, if elected?
Okay, so I would, the top priority first of all is our children. I mean, let's all agree on that. I think I would love to continue adding electives into the high school that give kids the opportunity, who might not be taking the traditional college route, to be able to have some sort of exposure to that, to see what they might do outside of school once they graduate. I'd love to see more options for the middle school election, for middle school electeds. A home ec class, a cooking class, something that gives kids a little bit of independence and pride, something that's a life skill that they can learn and build on. I understand though, due to the lack of budget staffing facilities, that this will all contribute to that making a little bit of a challenge to do, which leads me to my next priority, which is a new middle school. That building is almost 100 years old and is in need of major repairs. I'd love to be able to give the students and our community something to be proud of when we drive by that. I'm excited to be part of the school bond advisory committee that's going to look into being able to do that for the kids. I'm very excited. The third priority is student achievement and how we can measure it. For example, we would, I would love to be able to find a way to gather data on success of students on all levels and not just rely on state testing alone. K through 8 has an in-house testing which produces results in setting. There's no waiting for them. 9 through 12 does not have that as an option. The students take the state testing and then its teachers pick the results back.
I know, right? Audience, how many seconds do they have?
30.
Yeah, they're going to look fast. All right, so, and I'll squeeze for it. Yep.
Okay, my top priorities all are around kids. I really would like them to be engaged in their, involved in activities and provide the kids with a path to success, whatever that means for them, throughout our schools. I also want to talk a little bit about communication and through this board process, it's become clear that there's a misperception, misunderstanding about our board process and our responsibilities of the board. So this is particularly important in our board meetings where we have public comments. We're not discussing the public comment in the board meeting, but I want you to know, we do hear you. We listen and it is impacted in our decision-making. So, excuse me. It was during a board retreat last year that we identified the need for this communication. We do need to work harder in getting this message out to the community on our process. And we have since hired a director of communications. That came as a result of our board retreat. Keeping my own clock. The other area, which I probably can't relate to, but it's our test results. And our test results, we know who they are. You have to know where they are before you can figure out where you need to be and how to get there. So our kids are my main priority and the subjects I listed, but also the communication is something that I will work really hard on.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm honored. Just a reminder, please try to hold your microphone a little closer to your mouth. All our answers.
Lauren? Well, one of my, my first, the first thing that I'd like to do is bring a little bit more trust and transparency back to the school board. It's true that you can get up and do public discussions, but you never have an opportunity to talk to a board member. Which leads me to my second thing, which is, a number of years ago, there was a policy that was passed where you, as a board member, you couldn't give your contact information and you weren't able to talk directly to a board member. And I think that sometimes people need that ability to have some free conversations back and forth so that they feel like they're not just being ignored. At least that's the perception because oftentimes you get up and you speak with a board member and that's it. You don't know, you don't know if they're, you know, right now it goes all through the superintendent if they want to submit something. And the third thing is, I really think I would try to focus on our reading skills. I know that the district, especially down in our third and fourth grade levels, they are not being very level. And we need to increase that reading comprehension, which will bring up all the other subjects. And I think we can have other resources to help us, help the teachers with that.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Patrick?
Yes, so the first priority would be, like Christine mentioned, the aging infrastructure of our middle school and our other facilities. I have experience managing large construction projects and I'd like to provide fiscal oversight when we do have funding to upgrade those facilities. So the money goes directly to the kids and there's no wasted money. The second priority is financial stability and security. I think the school boards have a great job so far up till now managing our money. And with the enrollment staying the same, the cost going up, it's even more important now that our resources go to teaching, learning and achievement. My third priority would be vocational training. And I'm a big reliever that our curriculum should be aligned with regional workforce needs. And we need to prepare our kids for four-year universities, but also vocational training, technical education, community college. We need to have our kids prepared for multiple paths after graduation. But in the end, it's not about my priorities. It's about our community's priorities and our district's priorities. And I want to listen and learn so that we can, I can do whatever I can and help get our priorities pushed forward as a community.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm here. So thank you very much. And just a reminder, what are the top three priorities, if elected? We'll start again with Stephanie.
Yeah, so I'm very happy to hear about Branda's communication board because that was one of the main frustrations, being a parent, trying to talk to the board and get some, you know, things across. That's one of the main things that I wanted to bring to the board was more transparency. So parents can ask questions, they can voice concerns, they can access the curriculum easily if they request that. And as a board member, I think that it's important to let parents know that we serve them and they're our customers. So I want to be able to, to be accessible and available to them. Number two, I want to also improve our academics, especially reading and math levels. And I do believe that we do need more high school electives, more options, more literacy, sorry, financial literacy and more foreign language. Right now, we only have one at the high school. And then I think by doing that, we can earn some more parents' trust back and also bring some students back from homeschooling. Because I've heard a lot of parents are in school because of those things and so we can solve some enrollment issues with that.
Thank you. And Alex, you have an extra assignment. I'm going to have the question, if you could, from the microphone to the side. Thank you.
I understand the assignment.
I've seen that before.
Okay, so what are my top three priorities if I were elected to the board? Student success, obviously, because we care about the well-being of our children, but that ties into our fiscal responsibility because if we're not being good stewards... because if we're not being good stewards of our resources, then we can't provide the necessary classes and instruction for children. Looking at how we create equal opportunity for our children, excuse me, that is in a safe and welcoming environment, ensuring that all staff have access to the resources and tools that they need to be successful. If we've learned anything through this budget process, it's that our special needs classes are starting to climb and so our instruction and support in those areas are desperately needed. We need to make sure that all of our staff can be successful in all of their roles and whatever challenges come their way. And then finally, my last would be collaboration. We need to be collaborating with staff, stakeholders such as community members, educators, the experts in those fields, and listening to what the recommendations are and the best practices, tying that back into our fiscal plan and our strategic plan, and moving the district board, and continuing to move the district board in a very successful manner that provides an excellent education for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
I guess I give a bow as I walk. That goes to...
Uh...
Well, I've got a handoff.
Oh, no, Zachary. So you... See?
All right, my first priority is focus on core skills. Schools should be focusing on core skills such as reading, writing, and math with all the sciences. Also restore graduation requirements for success after high school. Number two is transparency with parents. Parents have the primary responsibility for their children's education, health, and well-being. I want to restore trust of the community and the parents. The last one is age-appropriate curriculum. Controversial subjects like sexual practices and gender identity, especially early ages, is best guided at home.
Thank you. Well, we're going to move on to our next question. So thank you so much for those far candidates. We need for the last and final question, but I have a few additional questions that I have. So, here we go. Question, you have ninety seconds, okay? But I have more than ninety seconds to read these questions, so give me a second. Can you tell us how the school board can work to ensure a safe environment for all students and staff? This includes physical, emotional, and psychological safety.
In ninety seconds?
Yep.
Okay, and of course, safety is paramount. In my mind, this goes into two categories. There was an outside safety and one inside safety. Outside safety is your facilities, your schools, your campuses. And inside is more of the professional development, staff resources, access to student counselors. Both of these, the inside and the outside, are tied to funding. So I think maybe some of you heard the radio interview that was a couple weeks ago. And in it, I stated that there is, in 2003, there was a forty-four point seven percent of the state and moderate budget was dedicated to K through twelve education. Today, that's thirty-two percent in the proposed budget. Funding is an issue, and that is way bigger than just an enrollment. What I did say during that radio show is that, this came up in the budget meeting today, that fund provides maintenance on our buildings. It doesn't cover capital improvements. It doesn't cover security and tech. It doesn't cover remodeling or replacing facilities. So I think it is my job as a board member to use the funds that we have to do the best we can in our school districts. Get the word out, join committees, to communicate on the state and the local level the needs of our, not just our district, but the districts in our area.
Thank you. Lauren?
So obviously, safety is extremely important. We're setting our most precious thing in our lives to a place where we want to be safe. I would actually support and look into being able to get an officer, a resource officer, in the school. I think it would kind of be a deterrent and would help people feel a little bit more safe in terms of emotional or psychologically. You know, I think we have to be concerned about our kids when they're in school and foster a, you know, being kind to all students so that they feel included. If there's, you know, the teachers hold a huge responsibility of talking to their kids and understanding, some of them might be in poverty, some might be living on a couch. And so sometimes knowing that we can be a facilitator in helping their families so that they can have proper housing and be able to have a better learning condition is something that I think would be important. And then, of course, we're not psychologists, so even directing them to being able to get some counseling and some help.
Thank you very much. Patrick?
Thank you. When I was on the city council, Brandon and I worked on helping fund and partner with the resource officer. And I think we have a great opportunity here with upgrades to the facilities. We can, with those upgrades, we can make them physically safer and more secure with modern technology, with new building practices. So I'm really excited about helping with that. Another thing we need to do is really help teachers and staff with behavioral health. We need to provide tools, training, extra support for the behavioral health issues that are going on in the classroom right now. And then a positive culture is really important. And I've seen this in the schools, in different classrooms, when they have a positive experience for the kids and it's joyful and what they make the kids really want to come to school. That needs to continue. We need a positive culture. My son recently went to the freshman orientation here and it was very positive and was enthusiastic and they made it seem like it was really fun for a freshman to come to school at the high school. And they elaborated on the extracurricular activities and clubs. It wasn't about if he was going to, if he could choose a club, it was about what clubs he could be involved with. And that's really important, that the kids have another reason to come to school, for the clubs, for the extracurricular activities. That's where they're going to meet their best friends for life and their bonds for life. And so I'm super excited about really promoting that positive culture.
Thank you very much. Patrick? I just want to, Stephanie?
Yes, so I agree with the school resource officer. I think it's a good idea. I've spoken to some teachers who said that we used to have one in the past and made them feel very safe. And they did really well with the kids too, you know, keeping kids, you know, in line and supporting the teachers. So I think physically that is a good thing to have. Emotionally, I think if we are able to address their academic needs, it does boost their self-esteem and it builds their confidence. And so I think by helping these kids to really succeed academically, that will help them emotionally. Psychologically, I think everybody wants to be included and it's really important to have inclusion of all viewpoints and all, you know, ways of life. And I think as a board member or as a board, we can set an example of inclusion by working together and including all viewpoints, whether they are controversial or not. We can listen to each other and find common ground and solve problems for our district.
Thank you. And just a quick reminder then, the question, can you tell us how the school board can work to ensure a safe environment for all students and staff? This includes physical, emotional, and psychological safety. Alex?
Yeah, so I've been struggling with this question a lot because I can really empathize with our teachers. As a foster parent, I've had some very challenging children come through our door. And one of the things that resonated with me the most is support. If you have the support of DHS or you have the support of the agencies and therapies, then you, as a foster parent, can do amazing things. But if you don't have that support, you can't do it. So we need to make sure that we're supporting our staff, giving them the resources and the tools to be successful, to understand where these kids are coming from when they walk through that door, and giving them the tools to make these children where they're at. We need to be looking at our space. There's been mention about the bond, about possibly a new middle school. But again, utilizing our space to create safe, welcome, warm environments where children can come to learn. We don't know the situation that they're coming to school from. We don't know if they've eaten. We don't know if they're sheltered. And if they're not being fed and they're not sheltered, they live in a fight or flight mode. So we need to be supporting these children in every facet. But to do that, we need to support and invest in our staff to be able to do that. So for me, the three of them are very intertwined. And I see this as a board member for Columbia Community Mental Health, and they need to provide more resources and support to the school to help address these needs. My time's up, so thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to watch, too.
So I agree with Stephanie and Lauren on having officers on-site. I think it's just strong for stability. Also, just giving all the teachers the support, all the tools they need. Bullying's a real thing, we all know that. Everyone needs to be on the spot reporters. They see any incidents, they can stop at the U. Other things we can do, prepare for response. There's reaction drills in unsafe environments. They've got online classes that can be looked at for doing response drills. And all issues need to be defaulted to the parents as well. The parents need to know what's going on at the schools. If there's no communication, the kid just goes home. They need to hear. That's very important to me.
Thank you. Last one, Christine.
Okay, I think we all want our kids to feel safe, supported, respected when they're in our schools. This is where they spend the bulk of their day during the week, where their time is spent. I agree, I would love to have an engaged student resource officer at this school. But I also think we have issues that a student resource officer can't address. We need to have enough staff and make sure that they're trained with trauma-informed care. This teaches kids that, this teaches that kids have a past time and how to be sensitive to that and allow respectful communication. I also know that the school district has a school-wide system called PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Interventional Support. This was established to create a safe and positive student culture where individuals behave and can be supported, behaviors can be supported. An example of this is if your kid's running in the hallway, you're not going to say, "Don't run in the hallway." You're going to say, "We walk in the hallway." If a kid's off task maybe in the classroom, you're going to give the student a task to do. I've seen this in the classroom, right then there as a substitute for educational assistance and as a parent volunteer, and I've seen it first-hand before. These things are part of the number-one goal of the school district strategic plan. And as a school board member, I would love to hold the district accountable to make sure not only the personal, the person was doing this, but the parents are sharing in this outright.
Go ahead, say it again.
No reviews, Christine, thank you. I was just looking at the time. I think we have a little bit more time.
Yes.
All right, so this time we'll start with Lauren. And this is a bonus question, because I think you've received this question.
And the bonus is on first.
All right, ready? Here we go. Have you received endorsements, financial donations, and/or in-kind donations from any political parties or organizations? If so, please describe them. Who and why it's important?
Well, I am endorsed by the Republican Party. I should have brought my notes, but we're supported by a number of parent associations and... I should have known all these. I should have wrote those down, but... So, what was the last part of the question?
Who and why it's important?
Well, I don't know if it's extremely important as a school board member. I mean, yes, it is, but at the same time, we are going to be representing all people. And so I think we need to be open-minded and care about everyone and their situation and be able to respond to those needs. So being endorsed is great, but I don't think it's critical to be endorsed. I think the main thing is that you care about your district, you care about the parents and the teachers, and being able to help the kids get the best education they can.
Thank you, Lauren. Second question, Patrick.
Could you ask that again, please?
Have you received endorsements, financial donations, and/or in-kind donations from any political parties or organizations? If so, please describe who and why it's important.
Thank you for your opinion. I don't have any endorsements from any political organizations or other community groups. I am self-funding my campaign, so I didn't accept any money from any of those groups either. But I am really grateful. I do have personal endorsements from several people. And Betsy Johnson was our state senator for twenty years. The current mayor, Joe Backus, the former mayor, Scott Burgess, who was mayor for sixteen years right before Mayor Backus came in. And other people in the community, I'm so grateful and honored to get your support in this campaign. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Same question?
Yeah, so I was also endorsed by the Columbia County Republican Party, also the Oregon Family Council, the Right to Life, and several other family-supported organizations. Did receive donations from community members, also the Republican Party. And, you know, we represent a lot of their values. We care about parents. We want, we care about kids. We care about teachers as well, but we just want to make sure that we are representing our conservative voice for the board. It's not really represented right now on the board, so that's why we are accepting these endorsements and we appreciate them. We haven't received all funding for our campaign and mostly it's self-paid, so anyway.
Thank you. Alex?
Hi, yeah, no, I'm pretty much self-funded. I've received a few donations from community members. I am not accepting or soliciting any sort of endorsements from any pack or political party. This, to me, is about the children and politics should be kept out of it in every facet. We are here to represent them and to listen to all sides and to come to the best decision for our community based on all input. So I have chosen not to pursue any.
I am also endorsed by the Republican Party. Following that, I'm endorsed by the Parents Education Association, Oregon Family Council, Parents' Right in Education PAC, Oregon Veterans Association, Oregon Anti-Crime Alliance, Oregon Liberty Alliance, Taxpayers Association of Oregon, Oregon Small Business Association, the Oregon Sportsmen's Association PAC. I'm also self-funded. I've got some, you know, community endorsements and some fundraising. But I also come with the conservative voice and I think some years for the score.
Thank you, Zachary. Last one, Christine.
Lucky for me, this is a nonpartisan race, so I was not seeking any endorsements from a political party. I am self-funding. I have received a couple donations from community members, totally probably under $200. So this is definitely a self-funded campaign for myself.
As, I'm running on post, so my campaign's really been frugal. I'm not seeking any donations, not even for my husband. And I agree with Christine, but this is a nonpartisan position and I haven't been out seeking any kind of endorsements.
One more. Okay. Yep, it'll be a few more. We've got our next question. All right, who's our next? Patrick, right? Patrick, you ready? Here we go. How can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting and working to retain qualified teachers and school employees? One more time?
Yes.
Yeah. How can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting How can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting and working to retain qualified teachers and school employees? You have ninety seconds.
Well, strong schools equal strong communities. And I think strong schools benefit the community, even if we don't have kids in the community, by increasing, uh, stable, having stable property values, thriving neighborhoods, and, and an educated workforce. And so, in order to recruit, um, new talented teachers, I think, being supportive, really supportive of the other things in the community that we're doing, with an educated workforce and everything else in the community, and, uh, working hand-in-hand with the city council to make this community a strong community, will help recruit really talented, gifted teachers.
Thank you.
Can I have a question one more time?
Uh, of course. How can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting and working to retain qualified teachers and school employees?
So, um, I think we need to be actively, um, engaged in, um, making our schools better, um, that will attract more teachers that want to work here. Um, I think we also need to, um, be working on retaining the teachers that we have. I know that it's a struggle with our budget to keep, um, really good teachers. Um, but I also think that, oop, sorry, um, I think it's really important to, um, make sure that, um, we are bringing our students back so we can have more funding for our schools, so we can have more teachers. Um, I think it's a really good idea that we increased their salaries recently. And so, um, that is helping to retain them. Um, but as far as, um, attracting new ones and interviewing them, I think that is, um, a job for our superintendent as well, um, to make sure that we are, uh, attracting the good teachers.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alex?
This question wasn't on the list.
I know. This was a part of the time.
Uh, well.
Want, want it one more time?
You know, I didn't think I could, I am sure. So, really the way we do that is by being the best. I mean, people wanna work in a culture that is inclusive, that is welcoming, that is successful, that produces good results, and where they feel supported and empowered to make a difference. Um, so we want to retain and keep teachers competitive pay, competitive benefits, which I think we're doing a pretty decent job of keeping up with. Um, and then that support of our staff and our educators and making sure that they feel supported and empowered. Um, I have friends who are teachers. And I can tell you that the last three to four years has been really hard on quite a few of them. Um, there's often a question of, "Why do I continue to do this if I'm not being supported?" So as a school board member, that's something I am very passionate about. If we continue to lose the good teachers because they don't feel supported, then we're not going to be a district of excellence. And quite frankly, I wanna be number one, so let's make sure that we continue to be the best that we can be. Sorry, that's my scapoo's probably coming through, because of the way. So, that's it for me. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, how can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting and working to retain qualified teachers and school employees?
First of all, all schools need to focus on three core values. Care, courage, and collaboration. I don't know if you've all heard those. We have to make these schools attractive. You know, salaries, benefits, just a good place to work. Also focusing on all requirements, you know? Good interviews, um, more than one interview. Make sure we have all the right staff in the right spots. We have to support all of our staff. It's very important to me.
Thank you. Christine?
I get the question one more time.
Yes.
Let's talk about it.
It is. Uh, how can the board ensure that our district is actively recruiting and working to retain qualified teachers and school employees?
So we talk a lot about wanting to make sure our kids are felt safe, respected at the schools. I think we need that for our teachers. I mean, these are the people that we're trusting our kids to. Um, anybody who went through the last couple years in our school district had the experience of doing the online school with them. And let me tell you, those teachers deserve that pay plus more. And so I think we need to be creative with our budget and the money that we do have to maximize that and to be able to be competitive to keep our teachers here. Um, I was just at a budget meeting and they had an open forum and we had students that were there talking about the teacher. And it, she was so emotional about it. And this is a senior, it's just upset about her teacher, you know, leaving the district. And I was in tears and, I mean, I don't think we realized just how much impact these teachers have on our kids' lives and how we're lucky. We have amazing teachers in this community. It's why I love scapoes, the community members, the kids, the parents, we all care, we're all in it together. And I think we just need to continue to maximize what we can do to be able to keep them here. Thank you.
Not gonna ask you to do it again. Um, you have heard enough for me about funding. I think pay is, of course, really important. But I also think that support in the school and, um, I think, we, uh, have limited our class sizes. I think it's really important to keep our class sizes small, that these class sizes are not what you see in other districts. Um, I also think, I'm gonna go back to something that Pat said, supporting the kids and getting them engaged. Um, I don't know if you guys all know, but we've, um, waived the fees for extracurricular activities. And I've said this, um, before, but going to these track meetings and seeing these kids that are crossing the finish line, our, our track team in middle school went from, uh, sixty kids last year to a hundred and fifty-eight this year. So these kids are so engaged, they're so happy to be there. And I think this translates into the classroom. And I think that the teachers have an easier time with the kids that are engaged. So I, I think support, I, yes, I will plug for funding, um, but also those extras that, uh, we can help our teachers, um, with. Just supporting our teachers.
Thank you, Lauren. Lauren?
It's usually all, it's usually all about the money. But usually it's not too. Um, and that is, I think that we need to foster at least the appearance or attempt to, uh, gain the trust back into the schools. And you'll see a lot of people who will bring their homeschool people back to public schools. I wanna be an advocate for public school. And by doing that, and even private schools, which are extremely expensive, um, you know, by increasing our enrollment, we're gonna get a lot of, a lot more funding. And that funding can be put back to helping, uh, pay teachers more and be, have them more attractive. Um, I have two daughters who are teachers. And when we went, would visit them or be in their home, they're sitting writing papers and trying to get ready. They spend so much time and they deserve more pay. Uh, I know that Oregon is a lot better than a lot of states, somewhere half of what we pay here. But I think we need to be, uh, bringing a lot of those, uh, kids who are in private school or in homeschool back to the schools so we can provide that extra funding.
Thank you very much, uh, candidates. Uh, we really appreciate you taking the time to share your answers with us. In the time of interest, uh, we will now move to closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. You know what I'm saying? Two minutes to give closing statements. Candidates, in your closing statements, please share with us anything else we've not covered in today's questions that you feel is relevant to your campaign. And give the audience a quick recap of what you have done to earn their vote. We'll start with Stephanie.
Um, so, uh, in closing, I am asking for your vote because I, um, care deeply about the schools. And I feel like we have so many good opportunities, so many good teachers here, so many, um, uh, wonderful opportunities for our children. And I also feel like, as a board member, I can work together to solve a lot of other issues, um, including, um, saving Warren Elementary. I've heard a lot of talk about that getting closed down. I went there, it's very close to my heart. Um, I also feel like we can, um, bring some more, um, homeschoolers and private school, uh, students back to our school so we can grow, um, our student enrollment and have more funding. By doing that, um, you know, we can also add more electives, more, um, activities, and make fun, or make school fun again. Um, I also think that we can, um, do a lot by, um, listening to our parents and making it available, or making us and the board available to them so that if they have concerns and questions, they're not, um, dismissed or not given the right round. I have personal experience with that, and that's why I decided to run, because I felt like, um, I wasn't being hurt. And I'm glad that, um, the board is finally listening. Um, and we are going to be able to get more communication with the board. And I wanna be accessible to everyone, the public, the teachers, parents, um, so that, uh, you know, I can listen, I want to be able to listen and, and work together to solve problems in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alex?
I am a fourth-generation Columbia County resident, a proud farmer and father. I have proven to this community time and time again my commitment to improving it and creating a place that we all want to live, work, and play. I am dedicated to our children and the well-being of our children. And I have a strong, proven fiscal track record. Um, I believe that I am the best candidate for this position because of the connections that I have in the community, the collaboration that I've already been doing, the work that I'm already doing. Um, being part of the Scapoo School District Budget Committee and the chair of that, knowing our financial direction, knowing our strategic plan and where we wanna go, I believe that I bring the skill sets to the table that are needed at this time to help move us forward. And I would be a great advocate for our community. So I thank you for your support. Hopefully you can hear your vote May sixteenth.
Like I said before, a vote for Zach Miller is a vote for leadership. I just wanna bring some leadership to the board. I care so much about this community. Um, I was born in Oregon, but I resided with my beautiful wife and I have two children in Scatters. And one of them's in school now, the other one starts next year. I'm sitting right back here, actually. So a vote for me is a vote, a voice for the parents and a vote, a vote for the parents, I hope. And focusing on all the schools, the safety, all the environments, and then, of course, our teachers. The teachers need support. And I wanna do whatever it takes to help make decisions with the other board members. Um, but I believe with my management background, my leadership skills, I'm the, the best person for this task. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary.
Well, thank you all for coming. I know all you were sporting events, Miss McKinnon decided to be here, but I wouldn't have any other way. And you have a big decision of having you, you're, we're asking you to vote for the person who is gonna represent your voice for the parents and the community, for our children. I have, I've known and been preparing for this role for twelve years. I started with being on parent boards, school boards, you know, and active in the community. I'm that parent that's gonna be in the classroom every week, helping pull kids out into the hallway to help give them that extra one-on-one that they need. I'm gonna be that parent that is helping for eighteen dinners for football games or, you know, bus rides and sports that kids are taking. I have a wealth of an experience and as being a parent involved in the community and as well as being this active sub prior, um, to being a school board member. I have seen firsthand the, the struggles and the, with, the struggles and the achievements that these teachers face and that we as a community. We live in an amazing community, and I think we all can agree, we want our kids to have more than what we have. We want them to be more than we were, and we want them to have more opportunities than we were given. And I look forward to being able to represent your voice and would love to have your vote on May sixteenth.
Thank you, Christine.
Well, thank you for, uh, having us. It's, uh, Elise?
Sure.
Is that it? You said Elvis.
I did say, yeah, sorry, no question. Elvis for Elvis, so yes.
Okay. Thank you for having us. This is a really important decision, not just for the school district, but for the community. And I think you guys probably realize we're losing seventy-one years of experience on the board with this election. So, these questions were great tonight. I think everybody's positions are outlined. It's, um, it's, it's clear where everybody stands, and I just encourage you to vote May sixteenth.
Thank you. Lauren?
Well, I appreciate the, the keen moderating today. Um, I, I want everyone to know that, uh, if you vote, uh, me and as a school board member, you can have confidence that, um, that I do have some wisdom and working with a lot of different situations, and I do care a lot about people. And, uh, and that's one thing I think can sum up everything that I've, I can say about my qualifications is that I do care, I do listen, I've been in a lot of different situations, and I have a lot of good common sense. And it's hard to run organizations and, and, and be a part of some of those things without being able to come to common ground. I have, as I mentioned before, I have a couple daughters who are teachers. I care deeply about the teachers. And oftentimes I do, uh, confide in my daughter who's a substitute, and there are some frustrations. And I think we need that open communication. Um, because right now, everything goes straight to the superintendent. And a lot of teachers, they may not feel comfortable, uh, going to the administration or voicing concerns because, you know, it's their job, it's their life of them. So, I hope that, um, uh, you, you would vote for me on May sixteenth. And I will do, serve the very best that I can and be open to all points of view. And, and do a great job for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Patrick?
Uh, thank you again for the associations for hosting us tonight. And also thank you for everything you've done for our kids and, and the teachers and staff. We, I really appreciate it. And, um, I guess the sum for me, a recap for me is that the, the, uh, the city here, my life, my growing up here for generations, has just given me so many opportunities to get me where I am today. And I just wanna pay that forward to the next generation. And, um, I'm very qualified from the standpoint of my volunteer service that I've done in the community with youth coaching, with my, owning the construction business. And I think I have the qualifications, the skills, and the vision to be a very, very great school board member. I have five children in four of our local schools. And I care deeply about the success, well-being, and productive future of all of our students. And thank you again, and also thank you everyone for coming to listen to us on Monday night. And we have sporting events and other things we can go to. Uh, thank you everyone for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick. Audience, let's give a little round of applause. It's not easy being an up here, and on behalf of, especially when you're getting ninety seconds. Uh, on behalf of the Scapoo Education Association and the Scapoo Inspiration class fighting community, I'm gonna say a big thank you to all the candidates for sharing your thoughts and your visions for our district. Audience, thank you as well. Uh, your presence shows your support for Scapoo schools and community. I hope that after tonight, everyone is able to go home, fill out their ballots, and cast an informed vote. And don't forget to drop off or mail your ballot, um, by or on or by Tuesday, May what?
Sixteenth.
Um, everyone, don't forget to grab a book at the back. Uh, I'm sure our, our candidates are still around. Yeah, so you will have an opportunity to ask the many, many questions, questions beyond this. And I appreciate you all being here. Uh, you've been a light in the groove, it's been hard to keep you guys down. Uh, I know I'm a very low sneaker, so I appreciate all you being here. Thank you, everybody, tonight, and thank you for everybody's support. You guys have a good night. You guys have a big night.